Well, Ms. Hernandez is on the phone, so she can keep working that. Are we live, George?
My screen just popped up and said it's now streaming live.
George says it takes 30 seconds.
Okay. Everyone behave.
Okay, Mr. Nella, we're live.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cummings. Welcome, everyone. We apologize. We had a few technical difficulties, so we're running a few minutes late. Welcome, everyone, to this virtual meeting of the South Bend Board of School Trustees on Monday, June 1st. We had a closed session at 4:30, and now we are calling the meeting to order. Ms. Hernandez, would you please do the roll call?
Yes. Mr. John Anella.
Here.
Ms. Leslie Wesley.
Here.
Mr. Rudy Monterosa.
Here.
Dr. Ruth Warren.
Here.
Dr. Sturt Green.
Here.
Ms. Stephanie Ball.
Present.
And Ms. Alita Jones.
She's coming. We're working on it, right? Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Appreciate it. Okay, we need to adopt an agenda. It's recommended that the Board of School Trustees adopt the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt our agenda?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Green and seconded. Was that Ms. Leslie?
Stephanie.
Sorry, Ms. Ball. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
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 All those against? Okay, we have an agenda. Next, it's on to approval of minutes, which we have none. So I guess I'm a motion to approve the minutes.
Moved.
That was moved and seconded. Any discussion on our no minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to recognitions. Dr. Cummings, here's always our favorite part of the meeting. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Nella. This evening, I wanted to start on behalf of the Board of Trustees and myself in reading a statement. "The death of George Floyd reverberates from the highways of Indianapolis to the streets of South Bend. Superintendent of South Bend Schools, I offer my deepest sympathy to the Floyd family. We must stand for change and insist that there is action to address the needs of the black community. We can no longer turn a blind eye to systemic atrocities that plague the black men, women, boys, and girls in our country." I would like to remind us all, in the words of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." Thank you for indulging me in making that statement. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence. Two weeks ago, we had a student killed, and so I would like us to have a moment of silence for Riley student Kelvin Stanford Jr. Thank you, everyone. Moving on, I would like to honor our West Side Memorial Day Parade Scholarship winners, and I would like to thank the West Side Memorial Day Parade Scholarship Committee for awarding these four students a scholarship $4,000 each. Amani Lee, Maximilian McCoy, Rotten Notestine, and Aubrey Richardson. So congratulations to those students, and thank you to the West Side Memorial Day Parade Scholarship Committee. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Monterosa, who will read our Pride Month proclamation. Today is June 1st. Mr. Monterosa?
Thank you, Dr. Cummings. "51st anniversary of Stonewall proclamation. Whereas in the early morning hours of June 28th, 1969, a riot broke out in response to a police raid on the Stonewall Inn in the Greenwich Village neighborhood of New York City, at the time one of the city's best-known LGBTQ bars. The riot was led by Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera, who threw the first bricks in the fight for recognition. Over the course of the next several days, more demonstrations and riots occurred in the surrounding neighborhood, including Christopher Park. And whereas, the Stonewall uprising, which would come to be celebrated each June as Pride Month elevated its message and story to the national stage, to ensure that future generations would learn about this turning point that sparked changes in cultural attitudes and national policy towards LGBTQ people over the ensuing decades. And whereas, this month is the 51st anniversary of what is now known as the Stonewall uprising, which started the march toward securing equality and respect for LGBTQ people. And whereas, the South Bend Community School Corporation is committed to maintaining an education and work environment that is free from all forms of unlawful harassment in all corporation operations, educational opportunities, programs, and activities. And whereas, the South Bend Community School Corporation is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its employees and students by preventing discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas, the South Bend Community School Corporation is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its employees and students. And whereas, it is imperative that everyone in our community, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. Now, therefore, on this 51st anniversary of the Stonewall uprising and the 51st anniversary of Pride Month, the Board of School Trustees urges its employees, parents, and students to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ community and to actively promote the principles of equality and liberty. Attested to this day, June 1st, 2020, signed, Dr. C. Todd Cummings, Superintendent, John Anella, School Board President. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Monterosa. We have a second proclamation. June is National Gun Violence Awareness Month, and to read that proclamation, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Warren.
Proclamation declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the South Bend Community School Corporation, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas, Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Indiana has 931 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 14 deaths per 100,000 people, Indiana has the 19th highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the district's highest responsibilities. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people that shouldn't have them. And whereas, the pandemic facing America has drastically impacted communities and individuals sheltering in place, which may result in situations where access to firearms results in increased risk in intimate partner violence, gun deaths, suicide by gun, and unintentional shootings. And whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in the Presidential inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should be now celebrating her 23rd birthday. And whereas to help honor Hadiya and the more than 100 Americans whose lives are cut short every day, and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 5th, 2020, the first Friday in June, as the sixth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas, the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the weeds, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 5th, the first Friday in June in 2020, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 5th, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the SBCSC School Board declares the first Friday in June, June 5th, 2020, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. We encourage all schools to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Attested to this day, June 1st, 2020, Dr. C. Todd Cummings, Superintendent, and John Anella, School Board President."
Thank you, Dr. Warren. We'd also like to recognize the Brown family. The Brown family has made it to both the Today Show and last week won $25,000 on the Ellen DeGeneres Show. The Brown family would park each day on Washington High School, and they would use bus Wi-Fi. And so we just want to say thank you for their testimony, and we want to recognize them and say congratulations on their being honored on the Ellen DeGeneres Show. We also had two of our employees recognized by the Chamber of Commerce as 40 under 40. Our Chief Technology Officer, Pat Stolvey, and our Director of Digital Integration, Mr. Matt Modlin. So congratulations to both of them. Also, Mr. Seth Ponder, Riley High School Project Lead the Way engineering teacher, was awarded a grant by the Indiana Department of Education. We wanted to say congratulations to him as well. For their farewell addition, Mr. Alex Amonso and Bernardo Malone put together the final buzz in the band. So they're two of our favorite reporters. They're both reporters at Riley High School, and they put together the final buzz in the band, and we'd like to show you an excerpt of the extraordinary links they went to to make this edition really special. So, Mr. Jones?
Hey, South Bend, class of 2020. Congratulations. Well, you know, I graduated in 68. We all got drafted.
Yeah, me too, Steph.
Buzz in the Band, that's what I've been doing the whole time. Love that show. Hey, South Bend, class of 2020. Congratulations to all you guys. This is Dean Norris. I graduated from Clay High School there a few years ago. What a great achievement to make it through, you guys. As sorry has to be during this COVID-19 crazy quarantine thing, but you know, you guys are... I know it's a bummer. You're gonna miss the pomp and circumstance of an actual graduation, and you've seen your friends at the end of the year, maybe prom and all that stuff. Trying to find the bright side. You guys will... You have a story to tell. When someone says, hey, where were you during the great pandemic of 2020? You could say, you know, not at my graduation. Anyway, really, you guys are gonna learn a great and valuable lesson, which is that life can throw you some crazy, crazy curveballs. Stuff comes up out of literally nowhere, and you have to learn to deal with it and get through to the other side and persevere. So maybe there's some silver lining in this whole thing. Anyway, hope you all have a great summer, and I hope you all have a great the rest of your lives. Just amazing stuff lies ahead for all you, so enjoy it. Live your best life, and congratulations.
To South Bend High in Indiana, want to wish you all congratulations, and know that you will go on to great success. Why? Because you've been forged in this pandemic, and if you can survive this, I know that you will go on to great things. So from all of us at the Today Show, I'm Al Roker, wishing you, the class of 2020, all the best.
Hey, South.
So we wanted to recognize them for just the amazing work that they did in putting together their final buzz in the band. If you'd like to see the entire video, they kept me out tonight. If you'd like to see the entire video, it is on their YouTube page. And finally, on behalf of my board members and myself, who participated in Battle of the Books last week. First, who knew the Battle of the Books was even going to be able to happen? But all this year, from selecting books to communicating, to making sure there was a virtual alternative, Dee Simpson went above and beyond the Call of Duty to pull off a fantastic virtual Battle of the Books. And even while finishing up this year, she was already working on next year. So tonight's Team South Bend Award awarded on behalf of my board and myself goes to Dee Simpson for her extraordinary work on Battle of the Books. So thank you, Dee, for all of your terrific work. And Mr. Nella, that is the end of our recognition for this evening.
What place did we finish as the board? Third, fourth? Yeah. We were overmatched. They were great. So thank you for all that. It was really fun to do. Okay, thank you, Dr. Cummings. And as always, we're back to you anyway. So superintendent announcements, so keep it going.
Thank you, Mr. Nella. Our new Magnet School billboards are going to be up, so please look on Thursday or Friday for those. I've seen them. They're gonna be great. So please look for those up and around town. Seniors, finally, you get to pick up your cap and gown, and we will be able to do that on Tuesday, June 2nd, at 7:00 p.m. at Clay High School. Wednesday, June 3rd, at 7:00 p.m. at Riley High School. Thursday, June 4th, at 6:00 p.m. Oh, I'm reading the wrong things. That's not right. I have the wrong... There we go. Okay, sorry about that. Riley High School, June 3rd, 10 to 3. That sounds better. Clay, Thursday, June 4th, 11 to 3. Rise Up, Thursday, June 4th, 10 to 3. Adams, Friday, June 5th, 11 to 3. And Washington High School, June 5th, 11 to 3. Which means those coincide with Senior Virtual Awards. These make sense. Senior Virtual Awards, Tuesday, June 2nd, Clay High School at 7:00 p.m. virtually. Wednesday, June 3rd, at 7:00 p.m. at Riley High School. Thursday, June 4th, at 6:00 p.m. at Rise Up Academy. Thursday, June 4th, at 7:00 p.m. Adams. And Friday, June 5th, at 7:00 p.m. at Washington High School. So to clarify that, those times are also on our website as well. I also want to announce the graduation dates and times, as well as the military graduation. So the military graduation will be Sunday, June 14th, at Howard Park. Graduation for everyone else, Adams, you'll be Friday, July 24 in person. Washington, you'll be Saturday, July 25 in person. Clay, Saturday, July 25. Rise Up, Saturday, July 25. And Riley, also Saturday, July 25. The backup date for inclement weather, all four, all five of them will be Sunday, July 26. And those specific days, times, entrances, and protocols are also on our website. I'd also like to remind everyone that tomorrow is the day to vote, so please make sure that you are voting on June 2nd. On the ballot are questions that deal with support for teachers, ensuring all of our students are college and workforce-ready, and the safety and security of our building. So if you haven't voted by mail, you haven't voted in person early, we encourage you to make sure that you vote tomorrow. And so I wanted to share our COVID update briefly. So the board and the public know what we're thinking, where we are. And so we just talked about graduation. So please keep in mind, there's gonna be very specific protocol. So masked in, mask out. We're gonna be asking folks to socially distant. And the same thing at the military honor graduation. Mask in, mask out. Your principals will be in touch with you about the number of tickets and the protocol for entrance and exit. I want to do a little technology update. We've replaced nearly 2,700 Chromebooks. We have an additional 4,000 Chromebooks ordered to make sure that we are able to meet all the needs of our students and families for next year. We've ordered an additional 300 laptops for all of our staff members, so that we can ensure that our staff members can work mobily, and eventually our plan is for all of our desktops to be replaced with laptops. We're in the process of disinfecting our devices, and we will be doing that on devices that were not returned. And then as we return our devices, our technology department will be disinfecting those and getting those ready for next year. When can students pick up their personal items? On July 7, and these are divided by last names, high school students can pick up their items. On July 8, middle schoolers can pick up their items. July 9, elementary students can pick up their items. And July 15 will be a catch-all day, and we'll ask you to contact your specific school for details of how to get your items on that day. We also want to talk about the reopening scenarios that we're working on. We're about to release an end-of-the-year survey. Students and parents and teachers, we would love your feedback. We'd love your feedback on what you'd like to see in reopening. What do you think are great ideas in reopening? Currently, we're working with three different models. We're working with the hybrid model, an alternating schedule model, and then a back-to-normal model. If you listen to the governor, and we are awaiting the governor's announcement in early July about his directives, because we'll take our directives from the governor's office and from the Department of Health. But in listening to the news and early plans that we've heard, we have begun the process of buying bulk mask and hand sanitizer. We are looking at plans for social distancing in the classrooms and lunchrooms. We've been working with chart wells. We're creating isolation rooms in case folks are ill. We've ordered 20,000 cloth masks. We've ordered 500 touchless thermometers, and we're working on ensuring that we have more nurses to be able to take temperatures of folks when they enter our buildings. So we're working with those three models, but we still want to get public input, and that survey will be coming out at the end of this week. I want to say thank you to Mr. Samansky and Mr. Miskin, who tomorrow are bringing back their operations folks. These are two examples of new signage that will be in our buildings. And then their staff return plans for tomorrow, and how they're disinfecting the buildings, how they're self-checking, and how they're dealing with handwashing. So thank you for your really great work with that. So we want to give you an idea of what we've been working on since the last board meeting. And that's the end of superintendent announcements, Mr. Nella.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Wesley.
Yeah, Dr. Cummings, thank you for that report. I do have just a couple of questions that you could look into with the COVID-19. Is there a possibility that we look at washer and dryers into all of our schools with the, under the COVID impact? Is that a possibility of being able to have a washer and dryer there at each school?
I know that our crisis management team has started working. We will add that to our discussion on Thursday. I think that's a great idea. Not only are we gonna continue our relationship with Burton's, but having washer and dryer facilities in all of our buildings, we will certainly look into that.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Dr. Warren, you look like you're moving to the mic, but you gotta unmute yourself. You're still on mute.
I know. Okay, got it. Dr. Cummings, when the students come into the buildings for their pickups, will they be asked to wear masks?
Thank you. Excellent question. And their principals will be communicating with them and their parents. Yes, the expectation will be that everyone will wear a mask. We ask you to bring your own mask. We will have disposal masks there for folks as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Warren. Anyone else? All right. Thanks, Dr. Cummings. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's see, we're on to academic focus, 7.01, retirees and years of service honorees.
So tonight, usually, it's fun to do it with everyone there, but tonight, we're gonna do this virtually, and I like to turn the honorees of our retirees in year of service over to our Chief Operations Officer, Mr. Rene Sancho.
Thank you, Dr. Cummings. Superintendent Cummings, President Nella, and distinguished members of the board. It is my great honor to recognize and congratulate the 2020 retirees and our service award recipients. First, I will recognize the retirees, followed by our employees who have served SBCSC for 20, 25, 30, 35, 40, 45, 60, and 65 years. So beginning our retirees, we have Michelle Beatty, Kimberly Bergeron, Georgia Bethel, Laura Boguchi, Kevin Brewer, Nancy Carmichael, Susan Coney, Mary Cook, Frederick Krail, Eva Davis, Christine Eberhart, Laura Evans, Laura Fahy, Cynthia Fozzo, Diane Fritz, Mary Ann Garris, Suzanne Harness, Alma Harris, Gregory Harris, Linda Harrison, Jeanette Hoggle, Christine Hornig, Diana Jocinski, Linda Jara, Cora Johnson, Teresa Jones, Frances Durek, Sherry Justice, Philip Katsinski, Colleen Keller, Marcy King, Ronald Cochise Sr., Cynthia Landrum, Duane Lewandowski, Luann Martin, Francisca Martinez, Mary Ann McCarthy, Sandra McCarthy, Gregory Mercer, Karen Miller, Donald Moley, Marsha O'Connell, Cynthia Ozler, Judy Patsinski, James Palin, Jane Pello, Lamont Pello, Julie Peterson, Ann Peterson, Ann Raymer, John Ritzler, Vicky Zepankiewicz, Joseph Scambaluri, Ann Summers, Kathleen Sullivan, Kenneth Thomas, Percy Tobar, Roberta Turnage, Denise Wimmer. Those are our 2020 retirees. Now, for our employees who have provided us with 20 years of service. Cheryl Anderson, Michelle Bader, Jan Basker, Evelyn Battle, Jennifer Britton, Roland Cabana Jr., Nicole Copeland, Carrie Cotter, Brian Farrell, Deborah Ferrero, Karen Hensley, Carrie Hickey, Odell Hughes, Kathleen Jackman, Thomas Johnson, Lynn Cassinia, Amanda Klein, Susan Cloughenstein, Kim Kronk, Linda Lewis, Enrique Lozano, Kathleen Mangus, Julianne Martindale, Patricia Morton, Gary Nellens, Willie Owens, Lindsay Patton, Mark Phillips. Mark Phillips, Jill Renina, Kelly Ryder, Carol Smoker, Tracy Streeter, Marcia Taylor, Jennifer Thomas, Holly T. Ren White, Nancy Vale, Sarah Wagner, Janice Weiser, Chaz Wetzel, Deborah Wheeler, Leanne Zandarski, and Jason Zook. Now for 25 years of service. Sue Alerting, Blanca Bandera, Daniel Barnes, Susan Becker, Daniel Benson, Anita Blom, Christine Brady, Wendy Brenner, Mike Budinsky, Catherine Cottens, Christine Creswell, Lucy Dale, Joanne Donaldson, M. William Gergli, Paula Gutnick, Letitia Harmon, Pamela Hischler, Sue Holmes, Lisa Jarrett, Kathleen Johnson, Chad Johnson, Sandra Jones, Andrew Kern, Margaret Lepay, Michael Litsi, Deborah Martin, William Musser, Kim Ross Domiello, Kathy Sanders, Kimberly Sykes, Pat Sobelak, Joseph Sommers, Kenneth Spalding, Eve Woodward. Now we're at 30 years. Rene Aslakar, Linda Bennett, William Groves, Christina Hargus, Angela Henderson, Kathy Holloway, Colleen Hoover, Sharon James, Carla Kilale, Jeffrey Kroger, Lawrence Luskowski, Margaret Lidka, Ray Schneebekdeck, Richard Seerer, Christine Shaw, Monica Shepherd, Robert Smith, Mary Lou Van de Grind. 35 years. Yolanda Bond, Margaret Clark, Julie Congdon, Don Cuskaden, Cynthia Fisher, Tracy Grulick, Laura Holloman, Paul Johnson, Sherry Johnson, Gail Kirkland, Michael Kuntz, Edith McCarthy, Dee Montague, Karen Payton, John Ridenhour, Nicole Senias, Thomas Van Hall. 40 years. Rhoda Coleman, Janice Hardrick, Graylin Hawkins, Betty Heron, Marcia Kovas Kokot, Brenda Rayborn, Alan Wučik. 45 years. Pauline Busby, Linda Lucy. 60 years. Nevin Longenecker. 65 years. Beverly Beck. And those are our retirees and our year of service honorees for 2020.
Congratulations to all the retirees and all those folks, all those years of service. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Sanchez. I just want you to know that I had Mr. Longenecker at Adams High School. But I always tell my kids, it was back in the 1800s. Thank you.
And, Ms. Nella, the next on our agenda is an overview of the Thought Leadership Conference. And I'd like to ask Dr. Tessa Sutton if she would give us a report on the Thought Leadership Conference.
Thank you, Dr. Sutton. We're excited to hear what you have to tell us. Looks like she's still on mute. So we'll patiently wait.
Okay, everybody. Sorry about that. I was just having a little bit of trouble trying to open or get back to the screen. But I am going to give you an update on the Thought Leadership Conference. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay, so I am now sharing, right? So, thank you again, Dr. Nella, the distinguished board, and Dr. Cummings. And greetings to everyone. I wanted to bring to you today the overview of the Thought Leadership Conference, which is generally held in person. And so we were able to flip the conference in just approximately two weeks. So we are really proud of that. And we're really glad that people were able to hang in there with us as we made that adjustment. And so we brought together, in partnership with South, I mean, Elkhart Community Schools. The theme is building a connected culture and bringing together business, education, and community leaders. And when we think about, what is a thought leader? We know they are more than experts. They see trends before they happen. They inspire. But what's most important is they share and replicate their success and motivate others. And when we think about why we do this, and that is because leaders face these demographic shifts in our region, but also nationally. And employers are demanding these college-career-ready performers. We need to have agile workplaces. And so what's important is that today's thought leaders join forces to attract and retain talent, to create these inclusive communities, to improve economic development opportunities for everyone. And so that means that whether it's intercultural or however we say it, we all have to be at the table together because the community is not separate from the schoolhouse. And these are high-stake matters because the schoolhouse is a major economic driver in our community. And it's the schoolhouse and the community is a strong indicator where people choose to live, work, and play. So there are four themes, or strands, if you will. Educational leadership, economic development, and global business intelligence, organizational culture, and community culture. And when we think about who comes to this conference, this year, we had 50% of the folks were in the United States. The other 44% were out of the state. And then we had international as well. But we were able to really have these great conversations with people from different walks of life for the betterment of our community, our staff, and ultimately for our students. Sorry about that. So I also wanted to give recognition to our sponsors. This could not have happened without our great sponsors to really bring this quality opportunity to our community. And it's great that South Bend School Corporation has the ability to drive that impact in our communities. And so if we begin to think about saving the date for next year, which will be on May 20th, 2021. And if we note, the May 21st is World Day for Cultural Diversity and Dialogue around the world. So there are four really ongoing goals. And that's the Inspired Joint Decision Making because we can't make these decisions, you know, in silos, so to speak. And this is in my way. Well, we also want to provide applied tools. This is not a conference where people come to sit and get. As leaders, we are creating systems. We're creating trends or looking at trends and methods and looking at the systemic focus. And so we want to increase our knowledge and skills to help leaders be able to create inclusion because we know that impacts productivity. We know that impacts equity in our schools and community. Sheesh. Oh, so when we look at the conference summary, the attendees last year were in-person 223. But this year, within two weeks, we had 328. We had South Bend community, school corporation support, and participation volunteers. When we look at the funds that were raised, we were able to generate 11,000 funds. And then the in-kind donations were just really benefit for us because people gave of their time. They discounted what they normally charge for the conference. And then we had 26 sessions. In-person was going to be 46, but we really pretty much cut that in half. But the ratings were good and positive feedback. We had some technical snafus, but that could be expected. And so when we look at the stories and the responses in the next few slides, we can see that, I just only clipped a few. And so people were really inspired by the partnership between Elkhart Schools and South Bend School Corporation. We had someone speak from the Greater Elkhart Chamber of Commerce that talked about the sounds of silence and empowerment of diverse voices. And then we also had, they enjoyed a problem-solving generation with Jamie Cassup, who is from Google, who really brought a really positive message about students and students who, in the balance of equity and how students are creative, they don't lose their creativity, and how we really need to tap into that. And then our Community Leadership Roundtable that focused on equity, diversity, and inclusion. And so people thought it was a great dialogue. And it really begins to lay the groundwork and foundation for us to continue. We also had talked about housing because housing does impact our students. And so that presentation was brought to us from ESA, from the Empowerment Zone. So I just somewhat kind of highlighted the conference sessions where our staff participated. But as you can see, there was a wide range of variety. But we had Restorative Justice, a self-healing community. We had a meet-and-greet where people could have an opportunity to network and talk about the day. We had, again, that Community Leadership Roundtable where George helped to facilitate that conversation. We also had addressing, as we said, affordable housing. We had trauma-informed care. Lots of people have reached out about those sessions and made connections. We also had a World Cafe conversation about disproportionality. What can I do where I am? So we were able to really connect with many people and to really begin to continue to build those foundations, foundational conversations that will carry back to the schools and the classroom. So let me think about what's next. What's next on a smaller scale would be making these connections ongoing throughout the year until next year's conference, newsletters, online toolkits, webinars, and training sessions to prepare us for next year. And so that is my report. And I'd like to, again, extend a thank you to everyone who participated and everyone who helped to make that happen. That means a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sutton. We appreciate your time, all the effort. And I'm sure some of my colleagues will have questions or comments. Anyone wish to ask Dr. Sutton any questions at this time?
Mr. Nella?
Dr. Green? Mr. Montorosa, you're second in the queue.
I attended a number of sessions, and I just want to applaud what you accomplished. It was well-conceived, well-organized. And if there were any technological problems, you were barely noticeable.
Wow.
I love the chat rooms and the larger discussions. So, you know, I just wanted to congratulate you.
Well, thank you. Congratulations to South Bend School Corporation and the team.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Mr. Montorosa?
Thank you, Mr. Nella. Dr. Sutton, I also wanted to echo congratulations to you. I know that there was a lot of hard work that went into this. But what really impresses me about the fact that you and your team were able to conduct this conference is the fact that we're looking at the bigger picture, right? That we're not going to be able to solve our community solutions just by ourselves, that we can engage with members outside of our community and even with our neighbors, right? To be able to share best practices and what can we do? So I applaud you for that. I think it looks great, right? This shows that we are innovative and that we are a leader in our community in the Michiana area. So I applaud you for that. The question that I had is, because I'm so excited about this, and I'm a huge proponent of leadership conferences, having been a product of those youth conferences myself, would you be able to share what other conferences or perhaps might be in the pipeline for our students or for the community?
Yeah, that's a great, I'm glad you said that. Yeah, because since COVID, we've somewhat put it on pause. We started this past year with, what do we call it? Different Together. So there's a Different Together. We had a leadership conference with high school students. We had a day of leadership to begin to develop those concepts with them. And then we weren't able to continue. We've had some meetings periodically over during this time. We've been distant from one another. But we fully intend to, we're talking about, in fact, having a student conference for equity, diversity, and inclusion because they do live in a global world and they do need to have those skills on how to navigate difference and ambiguity. And as Jamie Cassup, one of the speakers in the conference, those are not soft skills. Those are essential skills. And so we're really looking forward to that. But it's going to take space to do it, is going to take really a team. But, oh gosh, yeah, that would be fabulous.
Yeah, that's tremendous. Again, congratulations. I would also share with you that many conferences now are looking to do this virtually. So hats off, the fact that you were able to pull it off, especially with so many people. But, yeah, this summer, there's going to be quite a few. There's two youth conference leadership camps that I'm involved with that are going to be going digital, virtual. So we're trying to see if we might be able to get some South Bend school students to be able to participate in that so they can see what it's like. But just pulling that off is a tremendous feat. So I congratulate you for that. Thank you for providing that for our community.
Well, you know, as much as, you know, virtual is a part of our world today, nothing changed. So when we think about intercultural relations, you know, we have to think about body language. We have to think about reading. Some people, what we call high context, low context. And so I'm hoping we will be able to come back together because that's where the magic happens. But of course, we can make it happen virtually. But there's nothing that beats building relationships with another human being face-to-face. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Montorosa. Yes, Dr. Warren? I see you, Ms. Wesley. You can go after Dr. Warren. Go ahead, Dr. Warren.
Dr. Sutton, thank you so much. Your organization was so clear that, how skilled you are in that. And I did, I attended some sessions where Elkhart Community Schools personnel talked about what progress they had made in reducing disproportionality. And, you know, it's another one of those things where they're so close, they're just across the county line. And yet, you know, we don't often have opportunities to hear about other successes. So I appreciate the opportunity to be able to listen and learn from them. And, you know, because this is such a high priority of our board, I think it will help us move forward. So thank you.
Oh, great. That's great. Because before I left that school district, I gained commitment for us to continue the, the conversation and the dialogue. So I'm certain that we can share and develop together. And I know we have different cultures in our communities, but there are some commonalities, again, across the nation, as we can see, that we need to address and make our, our region strong.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. Ms. Wesley?
Okay, yes, thank you. Again, sentiments to echoing back on my colleagues. I really enjoyed the conference. I mean, from the beginning in the morning all the way to the end. And it was, I mean, you know, you could sit on webinars and conferences and I've been on a lot, but I will say I was engaged in breakout session that I attended and then we had the time at the end to come back. It really made me feel good and I, I'd just like to say hats off to you and your staff, your department. You all did a remarkable job. And thank you for bridging that relationship between Elkhart Schools and South Bend Schools. Because we're all in this together. And that was, it was, that was a great feeling to see both superintendents. I was very happy, Dr. Cummings to present that morning along with the superintendent from Elkhart and to bridge those relationships. And so thank you so much for what you do. I'm excited. I can't wait to see more. I know that your department is going to be introducing some, some grand things coming up. And so again, thank you.
Well, it's my pleasure and I'm looking forward to seeing the synergy that can happen between the two because we can create a model for the rest of the, the nation. I think it's very much possible. It's going to take work. It's going to take commitment. So I think we have that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Ms. Jones, do you want to add anything? I know you've had some technical difficulties.
Oh, yeah.
There you are. Good to hear you. Go ahead.
Good job, Ms. Sutton.
Oh, thank you so much. Oh, okay.
That was short and sweet.
Yes, it did.
Anyone else have any additional comments, questions? I just want to add, thank you for all the work you've been doing. Thank you for engaging community partners. Sometimes I, I feel that way too much is asked of you. But, you know, keep it up and you're doing, doing great work. So thank you.
Well, thank you. And it's, again, I'm a we, so we, we will do this together. That's the only way it can happen. All right.
One foot in front of the other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wesley, are you flagging me down?
Can you hear me? Oh, yeah. I want you to say to Dr. Cummings and to Dr. Sutton, under Dr. Cummings' leadership, Dr. Cummings, you know, thank you for allowing for Dr. Sutton to, to, to take that department and really, I know for years we've been really asking about getting that, the equity in that department and really having that department up and going. And so I appreciate your leadership for taking the stand to, to, you know, I, I am committed to that department and I want to see that department grow. And so I really do appreciate it. And I always say, action speaks louder than words. And I'm hiring the staff in that department to get it up and going. And I appreciate you, Dr. Sutton, for taking the lead under Dr. Cummings' leadership. I commit very much.
Yeah, and I'd like to echo that too. Dr. Cummings has been a support and a very positive and courageous leader. And, and if I didn't have anything good to say, my mouth would just remain zipped. So I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sutton. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to give that department an actual budget. I'm looking at the, the budget. That department actually has a budget. So I'd like to commend you for putting a budget out there with that department so they'll be able to do what they need to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cummings. But we're going to give all the credit to Dr. Sutton this time, so. Appreciate it. Thank you very much for the presentation.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our academic focus this evening. So we're moving on to hearing of visitors on action agenda items. Mr. Monterosa, do we have anyone signed up for action agenda items?
Not on the action agenda items.
Okay, that's fine. We'll get those folks at the, at the next go around. Thank you. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. 9.01 through 9.06 is recommended. The Board of School Trustees approved the consent agenda, which includes accepting any attached financial reports and statements, which there are none this evening. Approving any attached consolidated registers of claims and distributions of payroll for payment. Approving personnel decisions listed on any attached reports. Adopting any attached resolutions, which are required to be adopted annually, which there are none this evening. Accepting any gifts to the corporation and approving any fundraisers described in any attached reports, which are, there's none to report this evening. And finally, approving and ratifying any contracts for $50,000 or less, which there are none this evening as well. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to, is this a time I could make a?
Let's motion and, and you want to motion? Wesley, Ms. Wesley made a motion to approve?
Second.
And Mr. Monterosa made a second. Okay. Before we get to you, Ms. Wesley, because I think I know what you want to do. I will make a motion to remove line number three and line number six from the non-certified terminations. Do we have a second for that motion?
A second.
Okay, Mr. Monterosa, a seconded that. Any discussion on that? Okay, so all those in favor of removing line three and six from the non-certified terminations, please say aye.
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 All those against? Okay, so we removed three and six of the non-certified terminations. Ms. Wesley, do you have something else to add?
I'd like to abstain, I mean, um, take out the certified, not new hires. Can we separate that out from the vote? Because I have to, I would need to abstain from line number nine.
Okay, so you want to make a motion to remove line number nine of the certified new hires?
Yep, to a separate vote.
Do we have a second for Ms. Wesley's motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Monterosa seconds that motion. Any discussion on that item? Okay, so all those in favor of removing line nine of certified new hires from the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 All those against? Okay, so we remove number nine from the personnel decisions of the consent agenda. Okay, so now, uh, do we, okay, we have a motion and a second. We've approved the two amendments. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with lines three and six of the non-certified terminations removed and line number nine of the certified new hires removed, please say aye.
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 Okay, so that's, that's been approved. And then what we'll do, Ms. Wesley, is now we are going to vote to, okay, uh, I guess.
And vote to approve line number nine.
Yep, yep. So we're going to vote, uh, do we, okay, I'm going to put it, we're going to put it back. I got, well, do we need to make a motion? Yeah. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with lines three and six of the non-certified terminations removed, but with line number nine of the certified new hires included. Uh, do we, do we have a motion to approve that?
So move.
All right, Ms. Ball and Dr. Green. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the minus three, six, non-certified terminations and including line nine of certified new hires, please say aye.
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 All those against? Okay, no nays. Any abstentions? Oh, and Ms. Wesley abstained. Okay. We got the consent agenda. You guys are making me work for it this evening. Thank you very much. Okay. Yes, Dr. Warren. Mute?
Yep.
Can you unmute yourself?
Sorry. I was wondering if Dr. Cummings could speak to the position on the non-certified list that I had asked about earlier to the public?
Oh, yes, I would love to. Thank you, Dr. Warren. And Ms. Fowler is also joining us as well. In fact, I'll defer to Ms. Fowler. So this was a position that.
Can we discuss that in items from closed session, since we discussed that in closed session?
We didn't.
We didn't? Okay, okay, that's fine. Just go ahead.
So this was a position that we created nearly a year ago and it was the new Director of Federal Programs position, which we decided to place in Financial Services. So there's a coordinator and a secretary that remain. And Ms. Fowler did a terrific job searching and finding someone. So Ms. Fowler, I'll let you talk about the position and then I'll also let you talk about the new hire and her skill sets.
Sure, thank you. So this position was actually open for about eight months. We searched and searched for candidates. We had a total of maybe nine people over a period of time that applied for the position. We interviewed seven of those nine people. Out of seven of the nine, three people got a second interview and two of those individuals got a third interview. And we hired Mrs. Susan Henry. She is a CPA and she's done a lot of work in the non-for-profits, working with grants on the federal and state level and compliance. And right now, that is one of the things that we need in this position. It was restructured. So the position actually really works really closely with the curriculum department to realign our type, to help realign our title funding so that we can take that title funding, making sure that we're leveraging what we have and using it in the most efficient way. So to work directly with the academic officer, which is outlined in the new job description. And then for the academic officer, and they will work on all the federal programs together and building by building with all the principles to make sure that we're filling in all the gaps and that we're meeting all the compliance requirements. And this person will also take a little more of a role in the finance department just so that they understand how all of the grants, because we get so much grant funding, how they all work together and how we can take that funding and make sure that we're leveraging everything we got, we have, especially during, during these times with the need to, you know, facing deficits, downsizing, and now coupling that with COVID. We felt even more of a need to get this position filled. So, um, yes, Susan's going to be starting with us and we're glad to have her expertise.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Appreciate it. My apologies, Dr. Warren. I was thinking of something else, but thank you. Appreciate it. Anything, anyone else? Okay, so that will, that will end our, our longest consent agenda ever and we'll be moving on to action agenda items. 10.01, it is recommended that the Board of School Trustees adopt the policy set forth in the attached document and publish it as board policy. 6320.02, responsible bidding practices on construction projects. Do we have a motion to approve that?
A move.
Moved by Ms. Wesley. Do we have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Dr. Green. Do we have any discussion on this item?
I do, yes. President Nella, if I could.
Yep.
I want to thank Brian Kubicki and Karima Fowler for helping me to further understand what this particular policy update is striving to do. I had a couple of conversations with them over the last few months and I just want everybody to know I do thank them for their clarifying input into this. And primarily, I think their goal here is to ensure that we're adding increased safety measures and OSHA measures and standards when we are vetting out our construction, uh, uh, our folks who are bidding on our construction projects. But I wanted to note before we make a vote on this particular policy that, um, at some point, we're going to need an overarching procurement, comprehensive procurement policy for the corporation. That's going to, that should include construction bidding, our services and supplies and other needs that we have. And more importantly, I think that we need to make sure that that policy speaks to diversity, equity and inclusion. You know, particularly minority women business-owned enterprises. We have a very short statement about it in one of our board policies, but we really don't have any teeth to that concept. And I know that during my tenure on the board, we, as, as a group, we really feel a strong need to make sure that we are being comprehensive in our thoughts about equity, diversity, diversity and inclusion and being one of the largest employers in this area and having a, a very big financial impact on the community. Especially when you look at construction, this is economic development. And we need to make sure going forward that we find ways to support diversity and inclusion in, in, in those procurement processes. So I just wanted to make that statement that this is a piece of what should be a broader conversation about a comprehensive procurement policy for the corporation.
Thank you, and we really appreciate your work on this. We know you spent a lot of time and effort on it, so thank you very much.
Uh, Ms. Nella?
Yes, Ms. Jones.
Yeah, and well, I don't know if this should be directed to the superintendent. Do we, um, do we consider how the consent order is factored in to minority contracting? The issue that Ms. Ball just spoke on, have we examined that to see how it fits with how we're complying with the consent order? Because I do know that the hiring is one of the requirements. It's not one that, that we've focused on, but it is, it is a requirement. So I just wanted to know going forward if we could do that to examine how that fits.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. That's an excellent question. I'm going to let the General Counsel, Mr. Kubicki tackle that one.
With regard to the consent decree, it's, it's directed primarily on kind of our interactions with students. But I will examine that a little more closely and see if there is something in there that, that talks a little bit. I know we talk a little, there is some requirement for hiring employees and it addresses some of that, but I don't know from a contractor standpoint. I'll take a look at that language and, and can report back to you on that.
Yes, it's in the original consent order. There's roughly 10 requirements that's in there and the hiring practices is one of that. So yes, if you could follow up on that, I appreciate it.
Sure, I will.
Thank you, Ms. Kubicki. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of approving 10.01, please say aye.
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 Against? Okay, we've approved a responsible bidding policy. Thank you. Moving on to 10.02, it is recommended that the Board of School Trustees adopt resolution allowing participation in the Indiana Bond Bank 2020 mid-year funding program. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Wesley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Green. Ms. Fowler, I think you might have a little input on this to put you on the spot. Why don't you just give us a, a little rundown on what this is?
Sure thing. And really quickly, just to, if I can, piggyback on the last thing that was approved. I just wanted to thank the board for your support on that. In particular, Stephanie, Ms. Leslie Wesley, Ruth Warren, who followed up with us a couple of different times on it because it's necessary. And I just wanted to allow you guys, thank you. And, and Dr. Cummings, who pushed it from the beginning as well. So thank you. This is a resolution authorizing the South Bend School Corporation to make temporary loans to meet current running expenses for the use of debt service funds for the operation. for the use of debt service funds for the operation fund and pension debt fund of the issuer in anticipation of and not in to exceed the current tax levies in the year of 2019 and collectible in the year of 2020, authorizing the issuance of a temporary tax loan anticipation warrant to evidence such as loans and the sale of such warrants to the Indiana Bond Bank and appropriating and pledging the taxes to be received in such funds to a punctual payment of such warrants, including the interest thereon. So basically, what this is, is because taxes were pushed back this year, the payments for taxes were pushed back to June. We will not receive our normal payments that we receive this year. We will actually receive them late. Taxes are usually done, received in May. They push them back. We will receive our taxes around the beginning of July, and this actually, the levy gives us the right to reserve a loan for debt services, just to make sure that we have no cash flow issues.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. I have one question about that. Considering everything going on economically, how does it address if, I'm assuming there's going to be more delinquencies or non-payments than in the past? Does that come into effect in this?
Yes, that's part of why we, that's part of why we went forward with the waiver and decided to decided to go for the loan, just in case. From our calculations, we seem to be okay, but we just wanted to make sure, because most counties, what we've heard from municipal advisors, some of the counties that are currently receiving their funds already are only receiving about 15% of the funds that they would normally receive. And that's in part because of a lot of people that have like escrow payments, and so some of the banks automatically made those escrow payments. However, they're also projecting that we will receive maybe 10 to 15% less than normal. So if you couple that with the weight, yes, that's, we want to just make sure that we're in a good space.
No, thank you.
To meet all of our obligations.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Fowler. Seeing no additional comments, all those in favor of approving 10.02, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay, 10.02 has been approved. Next is 10.03. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the contract to provide Logan Community Resources Therapy Behavioral Services for special needs students. Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Ms. Wesley. Do we have a second? Ms. Ball, the second? No?
No, but I can second.
Oh, sure, there you go. People's audios on, it sounds like maybe it was you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Mr. Johns' wonderful face just lit up on my screen. So I'm assuming you're here to tell us a little bit about 10.03.
Yes, this is an opportunity for us to partner with Logan Industries and start a classroom for students with autism. These students typically are at Logan Center, and when we find the transition back to the schools, there's some things that the center just can't emulate, such as bell schedules, students in the cafeteria, and so this gives them an opportunity to work with those students prior to them entering back from that ABA setting. And then it also provides an opportunity for our teachers and staff to collaborate with Logan and have professional development to broaden our skills as well as in the teachers. So we wanted to start it at Logan or at Darden, because it's close proximity to Logan, and so they're pretty close there, and they can monitor that. And then also Logan or Darden has the facility and the classrooms in order to house the program.
Thank you, Mr. Johns. And first, I just want to mention that we're sorry to see you go. We appreciate all your years of work, and I know that wherever you're going, you'll do a great job, and you'll be greatly appreciated. So thank you for that, and thank you for your service. And I'm assuming some of my colleagues may have questions or comments. Anyone wish to speak?
Johns, we're sorry to see you go, but we appreciate everything that you've done for the corporation and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monterosso. Ms. Wesley?
Yes, Mr. Johns, you know, I always tell you, I appreciate all that you have done, and you have been a huge asset to the South Bend School Corporation. Wish you best of luck. Always know where home is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Anyone else? So, so Mr. Johns, this is the first time we've entered this agreement, correct?
Correct.
And why, I mean, you did say Darden for proximity? Okay.
Yeah, so it's very close to Logan, and so they're going to be in collaboration with that classroom and running it. So they wanted to be close in proximity to that, and then to their facility as well, and then also the space at, or at Darden that we have. We also have one of our own autism classrooms at Darden, and so we thought that it'd be a best fit, because the students, when they return from a facility like this, would go into one of our autism programs, and so we thought it'd be a very easy transition for those students.
Okay, yeah, thank you, and for building another community partnership. So thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, seeing silence, all the, oh, no, Dr. Covides, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Johns. The folks from Logan wanted to be here this evening to talk about the program, and he kindly asked them to come another time when we weren't virtual and needed to let people in and out of the meetings. And so I just want to recognize that they did want to come and show their support, and thank you, Mr. Johns, for making all that happen. But we will invite them back at another time.
Thank you, Dr. Cummings. Okay.
I did tell them that if they'd like me to come back, I'm always willing to come back if I don't have any other prearrangements, so.
Well, I don't know if we like you that much.
Mr. Nella?
Yes, Dr. Warren.
Um, I wanted to thank Mr. Johns. I had sent some questions about this earlier, and he addressed all of them in his presentation, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. Okay, all those in favor of approving 10.03, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Okay, that's great. We have a partnership with Logan. Thank you very much. 10.04. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the contract to provide Stepping Stones Cumberland Therapy Services LLC for special needs students. Do we have a motion to approve?
A move.
Second.
That was moved by Ms. Wesley and seconded by Dr. Green. Mr. Johns, you're still there, so I have a feeling you can tell us a little bit about this.
Yes, so these next two are contracts that we enter in agreement with these companies in order for them to help us find viable applicants. A lot of times, applicants will come to an area for like a two- to three-year stint, because perhaps their spouse is working at Notre Dame on their graduate or something like that. And so they, they work through these contracted companies, because they get to keep their insurance, they get to keep their benefits, and then they're not sure if they're going to land in that area or if they're not. And so this, this gives us an opportunity to work with these two companies that help us to find speech pathologists, psychologists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists. And so these are very high need con, or high need certified positions that we need to fill, and so it gives us an opportunity to work with these contracts that are nationwide and that can help us to fill those contracts. Currently, through the two contracts, we have three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight, eight people, eight personnel that we hire through these contracts. The contract also gives us an opportunity at certain points, one is after a year, one is after two years, in order to hire the people on with the South Bend Corporation if they want to go that route.
And we, and we've worked with these providers before, right?
Both are renewals.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Nella?
Yes, Dr. Warren?
Um, I just, I noticed that there was a possibility of teleservices in the contract, I think specifically with Soliant, is that how you pronounce it?
Yes.
And we, you know, before COVID, we weren't very favorable towards teleservices, but now since almost everything with students has taken a different turn, I was wondering if any thinking had changed on doing any of the psychological, because you said we were already doing some speech services with teleservices, right? So I'm just wondering if the psychological services, how, how is that thinking? Is it changing at all?
So I think during this pandemic, we'll see a lot more things of the teleservices come about. At this time, we are just looking to put these contracts through so we can rehire the people that we had for last year. If there is teleservices that are needed for psychologists, I'm sure that'll be brought back to the board. We do have some speech, speech teleservices at the non-public schools that we use. But at this time, we're not looking at teleservices. They just put it in their contract in case we have someone. But we would definitely bring that back to the board if, if there's a need for that. Through these services, we have been able to grab some candidates, and our psychologists are looking a lot better with the amount that we have and we're able to contract with. But I think that moving forward to answer your question, there'll be a lot more teleservices, because I think just the, the people in general will, will want to do some teleservices, and so I think we'll see more of that nationwide.
Yes, things do change, don't they?
Quickly. I remember the conversation around this the last time was, was there was some pushback on the teleservices concept, and well, now everything is, so at least for the moment. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johns.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion on 10.04. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
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 All those against? Okay, we've approved the contract on 10.04. 10.05 is pretty much on the same path. It's recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the contract to, I'm sure I'm going to say it wrong, Soliant Health, Inc. for therapy services for special needs students. Do we have a motion to approve 10.05? Moved by Ms. Wesley and, and seconded by Dr. Green. They're the combo tonight. Any, you've kind of already covered this. Any additional questions or comments on 10.05? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving 10.05, please say aye.
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 All those against? Okay, we've approved the contract, 10.05. Thank you, Mr. Johns, and you will be missed. Appreciate your help.
Thank you. Thank you to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving on. 10.06. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the award of the bid for the pavement renovation project at the vehicle maintenance facility to Walsh &amp; Kelly, Inc. in the amount of $186,300. Do we have a motion to approve?
A move.
Moved by Ms. Wesley?
Second.
Up, seconded by Ms. Jones. Got you, Dr. Green. And I see Mr. Zemansky, so why don't you give us a little info on this project, please?
Sure, this is the second half of last year's paving project out there. Last year, because of space requirements, we paved where the buses weren't parked. So we paved, paved all the in-between spaces, the driver's lot in those spaces. This year, we'll move all the buses onto those spaces and allow us to do where the buses park and reline it, and then the whole parking lot will be complete out there.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Sorry, sorry, Mr. Zemansky, they just don't get as excited about paving projects, you know?
It's, it's okay, but it's a good project.
It's important, but anyway. Okay, all those in favor of approving 10.06, please say aye.
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 All those against? Okay, your paving project is being approved. Thank you very much. All right, now we're moving on to 10.07, or excuse me, sorry, 11.01, items from closed session, and we actually do have one item from closed session. Dr. Cummings, why don't you tell us what we're bringing out of closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nella. Tonight, I'd like, I would like to recommend to the Board of Trustees that we place Stephanie Stewart Bridges in the interim position of Director of African-American Student and Family Services and Dr. Sutton's Department of Equity, Inclusion, and Diversity. And so I would like to recommend that the Board approve the placement of Ms. Bridges into that position on an interim basis.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve Stephanie Stewart Bridges as interim director of the African-American Student and Family Services Department? Do we have a motion?
Oh, moved.
Moved by Ms. Ball, and do we have a second?
Second.
Second, I'm going to give it to Mr. Monterosso this time, but I saw your hand, Ms. Wesley. I know you wanted it. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cummings. Any questions, comments, discussion for my colleagues? But, yes, go ahead, Mr. Monterosso.
I was going to say that, Dr. Cummings, thank you for bringing this up to the board. It's clear that Dr. Sutton can use as much help as she can with the important work that she's getting involved with and what we've already seen in the presentation today. And we believe, well, I believe that Stephanie's going to do a great job, so thank you for recommending that.
Thank you, Mr. Monterosso. Anyone else?
Yes, again, I'd like to say to Dr. Cummings and to Dr. Sutton, thank you for this interim placement. I think Stephanie, Mrs. Stewart Bridges will do a fantastic job. She showed in her other position that she's very capable of taking on that position, so I'm happy to hear that you're bringing her name forward as interim director.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Anyone else? And I just want to add that for my colleagues and for Dr. Cummings and Dr. Sutton and your administration, that there's a commitment that there hasn't been in this corporation to work on some of these issues, and we really appreciate that you understand that, your team understands that, and we want this work to succeed, so thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to approve Ms. Bridges as interim director. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against? Okay, congratulations to Ms. Bridges on her new position. That's great, thank you. Do we have anything else from closed session?
No.
Nope, no, we don't. Okay, thank you, Dr. Cummings. Next, we have hearing of visitors on other items. Mr. Monterosso, do we have anyone who submitted comments this evening?
Yes, Mr. Nella, first, I would indicate that I did receive a an indication, Peter, I've seen that make comments at the hearing of visitors, but I did not receive a specific email from him. But I imagine he'd be able to do so at the next board meeting if he did have it up to be heard today. And then next, I do have a message from Moms Demand Action, Indiana. Dear South Bend, to South Bend Community School Corporation School Board members, the school year has come to a close, and the hard work of many throughout the South Bend Community School Corporation is being recognized nationally. On behalf of the Indiana Chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, I'd like to thank Superintendent Dr. Cummings and the entire school board for taking the time to reach out to our chapter and making this declaration of National Gun Violence Awareness Day. National Gun Violence Awareness Day is the first Friday in June, and is the beginning of Where Orange Weekend. Where Orange is dedicated to honoring the lives of people in America affected by gun violence and elevating the voice of those demanding an end to gun violence. Gun violence ravages too many families and neighborhoods, especially in our cities, and disproportionately affects communities of color. We have felt that here in South Bend, even within our school corporation, too often, today, as you recognize the life of Kelvin KJ Stanford Jr. taken by gun violence, know that Moms Demand Action volunteers work every day to honor his life through action as well as the hundred lives lost every day through gun violence in this country. Kelvin, alongside other Riley High School students and his mother, Luria Perez Perez, was an active volunteer with our local group and other local gun violence prevention organizations. Today, you also made a declaration of June as Pride Month. We know that our LGBTQ community also bears a disproportionate impact from gun violence and stand in solidarity with the LGBTQ Center to disarm hate and to foster a safe and welcoming community for all. We continue to support, educate, organize and rally for safer communities. Strong, robust public education offered through South Bend Community School Corporation is essential to building a safer community. Where Orange is an important part of that effort. Where Orange has also had support from coalition partners, artists, cultural influencers, city officials, mayors, law enforcement, faith leaders, survivors, students, teachers, moms, and other advocates in cities all over the country, including lighting landmarks orange in support of National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Thank you for showing your support of the effort to end gun violence. Signed, Des Harris, co-lead Indiana Chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, John Adams, class of two thousand and four. And those were all the comments that we had uh, this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Monterosa. Okay, that moves us on to board communications. Uh, the board has the opportunity to speak at this time. Does anyone wish to speak? Uh, Ms. Wesley?
This wouldn't be tradition if I didn't say what I had to say.
Nope, it sure wouldn't.
I'd just like to say to all of the um, students and staff, administration, Dr. Cummings, all of you all, a big heartfelt thank you. Uh, we made it. We made it through the school year. Uh, the students, they really sacrificed. Uh, and you know, to just take on that e-learning, um, a huge thank you to those students that really, really put in the effort to get through the 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 COVID nineteen and just this big change. They're history ma- they are history makers. Um, they are leaders because they continue to uh, press through um, all the adversity into our twenty twenty class um, of graduates. I can't thank you enough. Um, I can't wait to see uh, all of our future uh, lawyers and doctors and carpenters and electricians and everything. Every, you all have really truly um, taken um, this pandemic and you've really made the best of it. Thank you. And to our teachers, thank you for your sacrifice. Um, our bus drivers, our nutrition, just everybody. I don't want to leave anybody else. So there's everybody that works for South Bend Schools, all of our parents, all of our students and all of our stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Uh, Dr. Green?
Thank you. Um, I have a few observations I'd like to make. Um, I first want to add my voice to others who have expressed their sorrow over the events during the past week. I'm reminded of a speech that Dr. King made in nineteen sixty-seven when he observed that, quote, "A riot is the language of the unheard," unquote. Dr. King's powerful words clearly resonate amid protests surrounding the violence that we are witnessing. Worsening economic and social conditions must be condemned as equally as riots. I also want to uh, reach out to thank teachers who continue to devote themselves to building robust learning communities so that all our students can flourish. The crises we are facing amplify the sense of urgency that we all feel. And it is impressive that teachers spent last week attending professional development sessions on literacy, technology, socio-emotional learning and mindfulness. Just today, I participated in a meeting of teachers at Marquette to talk about the ways they are fostering the development of restored justice. I was taken by the compassion I heard teachers express. Their work gives me hope that we can educate a new generation of young people who are committed to equity and justice. Finally, as the board and the city council work to create a compact, I want to say a few words about another way to support the health and well-being of children and families. We'd like us to collaborate to ensure that we maintain it, that we maintain public spaces like the YMCA, which, as I understand it, is not leaving South Bend, but which has no plans to reopen. For me, community centers are anchors of neighborhoods, just like schools and libraries. They are sources of education as well as recreation. Where young and old alike share ideas, motivate one another, network to create access to a wide range of opportunities and commit themselves to a better life. As it stands, data show us, show us that Saint Joe County is fourth in the state for deaths between one and nineteen, third in youth committed to the Department of Corrections and second in students receiving suspensions in school. The story these data tell us is one of urgency in our city, especially for families who need access to much-needed resources such as well-equipped community centers, not to mention healthcare, employment and housing. We'd like to see the school corporation and city work together to address what can easily be seen as a health crisis that is not limited to the pandemic. The trauma of poverty and disadvantage is a crisis that lives in the body from childhood into adulthood. We owe it to the citizens of South Bend to develop partnerships to ensure that the Y and other community centers are res- sustainable resources for children and families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Anyone else? Uh, yes, Mr. Monterosa.
Thank you, Mr. Nella. Um, I during it is that we are living history now. As we continue to work through the pandemic, I want to again recognize our entire community for looking out for their fellow neighbors in South Bend schools. We are certainly not out of the woods yet, so please continue to cover your face, wash your hands and maintain social distancing. We'll come out of this together. Sadly, another virus has come to the forefront and one that many of us know far too well. It is crystal clear that this country has yet to cure itself of racism. It is overdue that we as a nation face these realities, these harsh realities, and do something about it. Our country was founded on the ideals that we all have a right to life, liberty and happiness. It is interesting is the right to live. I do not believe that it is too much to ask that we all be allowed to live. When you're at risk of dying simply for driving, for sleeping in your own bed, for jogging, for watching TV in your own house, for cooperating with an arrest, this is denying people's right to live. This is denying black people's right to live. To our black brothers and sisters, I see you, I hear you, I feel you. There is work to be done at all levels, at a national level, at a state level, at a local level. As a school board, we are committed to equity, diversity and inclusion in our schools and ensuring that every student can fulfill their right to an education. Even in this meeting today, we have seen that commitment clearly as we strive for all of our students to be educated and to be safe. As an elected official, I again commit myself to be the community's voice, to be transparent and to be an agent for change. When one of us can't breathe, we all can't breathe. We're in this together and we shall overcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monterosa. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Dr. Warren, are you gonna give us a, an election update?
Oh, yes, thank you. I was
Put you on the spot.
I was, no, I was just really thinking about Mr. Monterosa's comments and kind of took me, took me somewhere else. Um, so tomorrow is Election Day. And if you ha- if you, if you have your absentee ballot um, but haven't mailed it in yet, it must arrive by noon tomorrow. And you can take it to any polling place. Um, so we just want to make sure that all those absentee ballots get turned in and that that now it's probably too late to mail them. Um, and we're just hoping for the best. And thank you all for voting and supporting us especially.
Dr. Warren?
Thank you, Dr. Warren. Yes, Ms. Jones?
Yes, um, can voters drop their ballot off at the county city building? Is that open tomorrow?
You know, I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, okay. I I can find out. I just
I thought they had to have, they could deliver, even deliver it. They just had to be there by noon, I believe.
Right, right, but I know they can deliver it to any polling place. I don't know about the city clerks or the, yeah, the clerk's office.
Okay, I I can find. Thank you. I I thought maybe you might know, you know?
Thank you, Dr. Warren. Anyone else? And again, uh, tomorrow's a big day. Um, but I also think of what Dr. Green, uh, it's interesting. Uh, I I read that quote from Martin Luther King today. And then Mr. Monterosa, uh, that was kind of an excerpt from John Lewis, the congressman from Georgia, whose statement uh, on the, on the affairs after uh, the George Floyd incident this week uh, in regards to uh, you know, a riot is the, well, that was Martin Luther King's comment, the riot is the voice of the unheard. And so all of that makes me think of one uh, final thought is that so many people know that they can't be silent any longer. And from a old quote from from the philosopher Jean Paul Sartre said, "Once we know and are aware, we are responsible for our action and our inaction." We can do something about it or ignore it. Either way, we are still responsible. And with that,
Mr. Uh, could I say one more thing? I'm sorry.
Yes, you may.
Um, so I would like now to talk to um, my white allies. And I think that um, our black friends and colleagues are suffering more than we can ever know about this. And so please reach out to them personally and check in and make sure that they know that they have your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. We've got a long, long road ahead of us still. Long struggle. Anyone else? Okay, uh, seeing no further discussion, I will move to adjourn. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Moved by Ms. Wesley, do we have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Ms. Jones. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you haven't voted, vote, be safe and stay healthy. Everyone, take care.
You too.